Good evening, good evening.
Good evening.
This is the agenda of the Reginald Board meeting, President and Director of Trustee, Senator Burnham Cook County, Illinois. And today about October twenty seventh, twenty twenty. At this time I will ask for a call to the room, please.
Trustee Cap?
Here.
Trustee Bonner?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Here.
Trustee Greer?
Here.
Trustee Richardson?
Here.
Trustee Claybrook?
Here.
Thank you all former president. We stand with pleasure. Please, please. Are there any approvals or corrections of the minutes of the board meeting that were found on September twenty second, twenty twenty? Any corrections to the minutes? There are no corrections made to the minutes of September twenty second, twenty twenty. I will ask for motion to approve the minutes that they are. I make a motion to approve the minutes, President. And a motion for both by trustee Claybrook to approve the minutes of September twenty second. We need a second, please. One second. Second by trustee Cap.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Bonner? Yes. Trustee Garcia? Yes. Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes.
Motion passed, thank you. Before we open the session to the public, do you have anything to say to the board? Give us your name and your reading of the address. At this time I will ask for motion to open the meeting to the public. I make a motion to open the meeting to the public. A motion for both by trustee Claybrook to open the meeting to the public. Could we have a second, please?
Second.
Second by trustee Garcia with a call to take the room.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Bonner?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes.
Now, thank you. Motion passed, meeting now is over for the session.
Can we get a standstill? I'm John Heiduk. And first thing I want to say is last meeting we were here, seems like forever ago, you had sworn in or whatever, gave one of the fire department people an award, and shortly thereafter, I'm thinking to myself, I've been a lifelong resident of Burnham, I'm gonna go do something about it, so I went over to the fire department, and there's a Cory that works there, and what I decided to do was, I gave a donation to the fire department, and I'm a real private person, I don't like to keep things to myself, but I'm not gonna say what I gave, but what I would like to do is, I want to challenge everybody in the board tonight, because especially Mayor Polk and Clerk Chavez, you guys like to sit at the center of the class, and that's fine, but perhaps you guys can go, I'm not gonna tell you what I gave, but Cory knows, go ask Cory, Cory will let you know what I gave, and I challenge every one of you to give at least what I did, if in fact you guys support the fire department as much as I did. I want to challenge every one of you guys to do that. You guys make your-
Why don't you just make it easy and tell them what you gave?
I don't have to, it's private information.
Okay, then. Do you have anything else to say?
If you don't want to do it, it's up to you, but I'm-
Do you have anything else to say?
Yes, I do. I can't believe you're even getting on about that.
Don't badger him.
Mayor Polk, relax.
Don't badger him.
If you want to do that, that's fine, but I'm gonna come back and let everybody know in here, who exactly did support the fire department.
That's none of your business.
Actually, it is.
That's not your business.
You know what, you want to keep that, Mayor, you're the only one here arguing with that, you want to argue this point, my God, God bless you. My second point here is, John, you said that the Pewauer House is still burning property, right across the street from me, got a new roof put on it, well, I want to say that there's an Arthur Adams, I had a conversation with the guy, he did the roofing, he did a great job. I want to give him verbal pat on the back, if you don't mind, give him verbal pat on the back, I told I would, I told him I would, and picked up everything, it's like he wasn't there, he did it in two days, so hats off to him. What I wa-
Which location, I'm sorry?
What?
Which location? I don't know where-
I can't hear you.
What location?
One forty-one oh eight Green Bay, okay? What I was, this is like a sidebar, you had put out a notice a couple months ago about a street repair, and we didn't have that much money, so you can't do all the repairs? Well, I don't know that much about this, but I do know, did I text you, I emailed Clerk Chavez, who hasn't returned an email, or if you want to respond, I haven't heard back from you in three months. I'm respectfully asking why, you don't even know what I wanted to ask you. That's fine, your silence says everything. But I was wondering, the sidewalk's not gonna get repaired, it's probably standing a foot higher than it should on a hundred forty seconds, so it's a safety issue, but I did see that property, now that I know it's owned by Burnham, it was like a two-foot diameter tree that was chopped down about two weeks ago. It wasn't bothering anybody for the last ten years. It's curious, that had to cost upwards of two grand, I was just kinda, why the heck that was done, but you don't have money to do the sidewalk repair, that's just another issue.
The sidewalk, public works has remained a void of that one.
Okay, I know money was spent on the tree that, I mean, it wasn't bothering me, I walk my dog through it all, I was just curious, I'm not complaining about this, but money was spent there.
Was that tree by the school?
No, that's a different one, I haven't seen, you were talking about that, I haven't seen that one.
Big tree.
Another thing, Mayor Polk, you had said in the last meeting that, at the very end, that things are going good around here, and things are moving forward, et cetera, et cetera, and okay, fine, my thing is that, I asked you last meeting about the quarterly financial report, and you says no, I said, what about the finances that John approves, the finance chairman approves every month? You said talk to him, so I talked to him, we've been going back and forth, and basically trustee Cap, not basically, trustee Cap told me there's too many pages, too many pages to copy for us. So, if we are doing so well, and that'd be great, but why can't we see the books if we're doing so well? John, you don't even have to respond to it, that's what you said.
No, that's-
But you know what else you told me, you told me to go and talk to the clerk or the treasurer, because that's their responsibility to make copies, and they haven't returned a copy of mine in three months.
You can't find a good way to do it, there are too many.
How about just get the sheet by sheet, put it in a copier?
It's way too much-
Of course it is, otherwise, then by doing that way, we might find out the finances. If you're doing good, you shouldn't have any problem letting us know about it.
We need to come up with a better system then.
Then copy it? Okay, John.
You'd have to copy every invoice and every, yeah, it would be-
No, I wanted to-
Why we looked at it today, it would be-
Just what you approve every month.
Yeah, but it would still be-
Just the name of the companies that we owe money to, that's all I'm asking for.
Actually, that's not companies we owe money to, that's companies we're paying.
Right. We don't know anything right now. I've seen trustee Bonner, she's asked since she's been trustee, she gets frustrated, you guys won't supply anything, she's asked for bills, and John, I'm not knocking you on that, we're going back and forth, I've seen this for two years since I've been coming here.
Trustee Bonner has been told several times she will come and review the bills just after other stuff.
I've seen you tell her you're gonna run the meeting the way you want to.
No, we- We're not gonna run the meeting.
I know, and that's part of it, that's part of it, we're just asking-
I'm in charge of the meeting, right?
If you're running the meeting, and you-
Your time is almost up.
Actually, we've been gone, we've own, three of the last five meetings have been canceled, do you mind giving me a little leeway? Now, having said all that, I gotta wonder, I look, every time I've talked with Clerk Chavez, she's told everybody that everything about Burnham that she has advertised is on the website. You either look at the website, I mean, there's four thousand people in Burnham, I challenge you to find forty people, that's one percent, that goes on the village website. I looked at the website today, see if the meeting was canceled or not, the homepage she directs me to, it states on there that the clerk's office, this place, and the senior center is still closed until further notice, it states that as I speak. I'm wondering, what the heck we doing here? Why, you opened up by half an hour ago for us to come in, I'm asking for an explanation. Once we leave here, is it gonna be closed to the public until further notice again? That's what I thought, Mayor Polk, that's nuts, that's just not-
Are you done?
No, I'm not done, I have one more point here, the police window is open, I'm assuming that's been approved by the governor to open, Mayor? That's in the same shared foyer as the clerk's office window? We've been told that it's closed to the public, blah, 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 well, having said all that, Clerk Chavez, you won't open the clerk's window, so I could tell you now that, as a result of that, I'm planning on running for clerk against you next April, so I will open up the clerk's office to residents.
We're not politicking, we're not politicking.
Pardon me?
We're not coming in and politicking, are you done?
I'm not politicking, that's my statement, I'm allowed to say it.
We're not, we're not really politicking, we're not from the public. Yes, I do. Unless anybody else does, I'll wait till the end, but if you can talk to me, I'm done. Go ahead. Well, I wasn't planning on saying anything in this meeting, believe it or not, I know a lot of you guys are getting tired.
Can you please state your name for the record?
Say it, sir. Say your name.
Say your name.
Gerald Honor.
Thank you.
See, that's the type of stuff that I'm talking about. You are a vindictive person, and you're very, very mean, okay? I just, when I have ever asked you questions, you, Mayor may think you're fine, but she knows what she's doing, exactly, because all I did was try to come up and just ask her a simple question about whether you guys are voting on your salaries, and I noticed in a minute it says that you guys are voting on that tonight, but a copy of it's not in there, and a copy of it's not posted at the village hall, and I can't get a copy when I come here, so I think to myself, well, wait a minute, how could a government body vote for their salaries to be increased, but they don't show to the public beforehand? That's almost like, oh, you know what, we'll pass it now, and you can read about it later. No, that's not how it works in government. I have to think you have to let us see that, and why wouldn't you? You guys were cited for the lack of transparency out of ten, I think the top number you could get was ten, and you had like a two, or vice versa, for all sorts of things that you haven't been transparent about, and now you put on a full-time treasurer, compared to all part-time treasurers for years, that which is fine, now you got a full-time, and she changes your accounting method that I warned you about, that I told you in a meeting you shouldn't do that, because you were saying the state wanted to put in an inspector general in the village to watch what was going on, and you didn't want that, and you went ahead and switched to a full-time treasurer, which cost the village a lot of money, I think some of these problems you're having right now, with having to raise that water rate, has all to do with how you manage the village, and how you hired and fired people, and I was one of those employees. You spent a lot of money with the village, and don't be rolling your eyes. You have, and I know you work hard, yes, you work hard, but you spent a lot of money, and I could prove those things, but the village doesn't really care, they don't give a shit. And don't tell me I can't cuss, because I can. Do you have anything else? If you're cussing me, no, I don't, thank you for my time, for your time. Are there any other public comments? Are there any other public comments? I'll ask for motion to close the meeting to the public. I make a motion to close the meeting to the public. A motion for both by trustee Claybrook to close the meeting to the public, and we have a second, please. Thank you, think I'm a double. Second by trustee Richardson with a call to take the room.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Bonner? Yes. Trustee Garcia? Yes. Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes.
All right, motion passed. Well, again, thank everyone for coming this evening. I had a virtual meeting with the Cook County clerk this week, and she was gonna send some information out, there are some people that owe money by the county, and one of the residents of Burnham owes the county about fourteen hundred dollars in property taxes, the county owes this particular person thirty-three hundred dollars, so they'll end up with a full of eighteen hundred dollars increase of refund, I should say, so with us working with other governments and being familiar with the process like that, those are the type of things that we can enlighten some of the residents of our, the ones who are entitled to those refunds, so, there will be others, I just don't know who they are yet. Another thing is that our supermarket, to be a vegetable market on torments, is progressing ahead, we know that they done the parking lot on Saturday, that is an improvement for the village of Burnham, we can get that vacant property back on the tax roll, it took about ten or twelve years to accomplish that, and finally, pray the Lord, hallelujah, it's being done, and the census is at sixty-four point one percent, which is about six or seven percent less than it was ten years ago, so we will lose money over the next ten years for cause of that. And COVID cases for Burnham right now, at two hundred, the private entity has a hundred and fourteen, the village of Burnham have eighty-six, we've only had two deaths in the community, community of Burnham, and the others go to the private entity. Now, as far as the sidewalk repairs, the village of Burnham is doing well, and we're making great progress, and we're keeping the town moving forward. If certain people, if you would let us run the village, then I probably could tell you a little bit more about that you don't know. I mean, as we speak right now, it probably will start next week, the village of Burnham is gonna spend eighty-two thousand dollars on street repairs, and the village of Burnham gonna spend at least eighty-two thousand dollars on sidewalk repairs this year, and it'll probably be done before November the thirtieth. No, but you just assumed that we not-
You could've just said that, sir. You could've just said that, that's good to hear. You're spending, I didn't say you weren't-
I mean, just let us run the village.
You could've answered me, I would've shut up.
And just let us run the village, and the village is in good hands.
You won't show us papers, you won't show us finances, Mayor, otherwise I wouldn't even be here, I'd love to not be here. I don't want to be here. You guys won't show us anything, that's what makes me come here. What are you guys hiding?
Hey, it's not open to the public, John, you got it.
No, no, I know, nice line though, John, you shut me up.
You can go for that, John, as well.
I just wanted you to talk to me, that's all, Mayor.
I can say another thing, you're not supposed to be talking to us.
I understand, he just said that, but if you talk to him, if you talk to us when it's open, I wouldn't even be here, wouldn't even be here. Yes, sir.
And we're closed, village hall is closed, only because of the COVID nineteen.
Police windows open though.
I mean, the village hall didn't close because-
Why is the police window open at the same time? If it was closed, I wouldn't bring it up.
I mean, the police, I mean, the police department is nine-one-one, we need that for that purpose.
You need the lobby open? You need the police lobby open?
We might need it open.
You might, you might need the clerk's office open too, that's why I'm running.
The clerk's office been running for the last four months or five months.
I've gotten the recorder every time I've called there the last three months. You should be on my end of the phone, sir. Clerk Chavez is silent, she's a church mouse tonight.
And right now, and the U S and other people came up there a couple of weeks ago protesting-
I don't want to argue with you.
I've been trying to make a scene, I've been trying to make a scene, you came up there, I mean, flashing about twenty people, and singing and bullhorn and all this kind of nonsense.
You know why thirty people showed up? Because fifty of them didn't know about it.
It don't matter, the problem didn't even live in Burnham, some of them didn't even live in Burnham.
You want to bet?
They all lived in Burnham. No, they did not.
They complained they didn't know about it.
Every one of them won't be voting for you, and that's about-
We just want to talk to you, that's all this is all about.
And as far as the-
I told you, I hate coming to these things.
And as far as the salary increase goes, then we are trying to resolve this, so you won't have to come back anymore. I mean, for the-
Start with offering financials to us, we'll shut up.
I think you need-
As far as the salary increase goes?
The what? Can't hear you.
You better expose to the public.
John, could you let us talk, we can't do this when it's open.
You had your time, you-
He won't let us talk when it's open, you wonder why I start. John, you're up for election in April too, buddy.
I'm not worried, Jesse, will you remove him, please?
As far as the salary increase goes? Will he be removed?
Officer, I'll be all right.
If you got it, it's not over the month, you gotta be quiet.
And as far as the salary increase goes for the elected official, I mean, there's not one elected official here that would be getting an increase from the next time.
Thank you.
I like somebody still will write and get a fucking lawsuit.
John, no, no, watch him off, man.
You gotta-
Sorry, man, just come, probably can't open. And no one is getting a salary increase, okay? Okay, now, we have to go through a procedure.
I can't talk now, right?
No, I'm just telling you, no, you don't have to-
You didn't talk to me, the meeting's open, that's what I got a problem with, I'll shut up, officer, I'm sorry.
And so the board, myself, the mayor, and all of us, I mean, none of us are getting any increase in salary. I mean, yes, that is on the agenda, I mean, that is on the agenda, but it's cosmetic, that we have to go through that procedure, so if we were getting it, and it was stated there, then there would be the increase from the last time, and if any elected official get an increase, it has to be passed a hundred and eighty days before the next one is related. And that would have had to been done by state statute about September twenty-second. If you did not do it by September twenty-seventh, then we cannot grant ourselves any type of increase for the next four years.
Thanks, John.
And by state statute, okay? Mayor, take a chance and talk to me for a second. Take a chance and talk to me for a second. The other thing- And I'll leave you alone, I'll leave the meeting. Good work. I'll leave the meeting, once, once, I just say this, when I bring up about that salary increase and seeing it, how important that is, I've seen it happen in the village, to where the salary increase gets passed, and I had one copy of it, then it got passed, and when I went to go get filed away, it had a different amount, people raised their salaries, there were three people at the table. Now, all I'm saying is, that's how it's set up, if I can't see it before you pass it, how do I know what you raised it? Let me say this, let me say this, and so you didn't have a problem with the village giving you a full-time job when your job was part-time? No, I loved it, and I would even say that, that was a mistake on your part. Really was. You didn't have a problem with that. No, it was a mistake on your part. I mean, you didn't have a problem- You really shouldn't have aimed me for part-time, I wasted a lot of money in the village, you've done it with quite a few people, and I think that's, you know, I'm with that credit, I think that's one of the reasons the village has had some troubles financially. You made it full-time, you didn't have a problem with that, right? No, I didn't, I just said that, I didn't have a problem with that. Okay. But I think you made a poor decision, because you've done it for a number of people, in a number of different departments, that I think has hurt the village financially wise, that always hurts, it's that bottom line, is that labor, and nobody cares, nobody really cares, I can't lie and say anything, nobody really cares about it, but I personally do, because it's the principle of things, so. Thank you, congratulations, gentlemen. That's all I have for the mayor's report, so this type of chaotic and confusing and condescending processes and concepts, at this time, we will hear a report from a clerk.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
As I mentioned before, please, resident, sign up for the code red, you can sign up on our website, so then you can get texts, and phone calls, and emergency calls, or some type of number that you would need to be informed. Also, the vehicle stickers are still on sale, you can get them three ways, you can either email us a copy of your vehicle registered, or you can make a copy and mail it to us, or you can make a copy and place it in the mailbox. In turn, we will mail you the stickers, once it's paid by a Visa or MasterCard over the phone, or a check in the mail. This coming Saturday, we're going to have a street drive-through here at the community center, from three P M. to six P M. So, we're encouraging that instead of trick-or-treating, and that is also on our website, and that is all I have.
If you'd like that information-
So, the trick-or-treating are, I mean, if some things are out there, it's gonna be allowed, or is it gonna be restricted, or, I mean, is there anything?
Well, as far as the neighborhood goes, or the community goes, I mean, we would urge the parents not to have their kid on trick-or-treating, I mean, but if the parents decide to do that, that'll be a home to parents, so, that's why we're gonna have it here this year, because of the pandemic, so, I mean, the community and kids of Burnham, you can come here, you know, alongside the building, you know, and drive through the vehicle, and we'll pass out the kid, and so, and hoping that would minimize the kids going to jeopardize themselves, especially now, since the virus is increasing its rise, and so, so we would do that, that'll be on schedule like the clerk said. And the code red, in addition to that, I think the water department will be flushing fire hydrants, I believe, maybe Monday or Tuesday, on the east side of town, and so, please sign up for the code red, as the clerk said, so you can get that information, so we will probably send out the first official notice next week. I thank you, clerk, for your information. Public educated and help save the world, that trustee Greer.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I have a letter that's addressed to Mayor Polk, the village board, Mr. Stanley Barrett, Chief Number, from Chief Stephen M. Powers, in regard, in reference to retirement. Mayor Polk, due to officeing circus hats in my life, I am unable to continue to serve as fire chief for the village of the Burnhams' Fire Department. Effective immediately after ten amazing years in Burnham, I must retire from the Burnham Fire Department. I can't thank you enough, Mayor Polk, for your leadership and believing in me. You are not only a great leader, but a great man. There comes a time in everybody's life where they need to make tough choices. This decision did not come easy, but I know deep down at this time, it is what is best for me and my family. I always gave one hundred and ten percent to the village, the citizen, and always the members. Please, remember me as a kind person, who would do anything I could when anyone would ask or need help. The Fire Department is in good hands, and that makes me a little more at ease with this decision. Also, God willing, good things will happen with the work that has been put in over these last couple of months with the projects for the village. I'm blessed to have had this opportunity, though more thankful to have met and befriended such wonderful people throughout the village. Thank you again for everything, and please, stay strong and safe. Respectfully, Stephen M. Powers, Fire Chief, the Village of Burnham.
Thank you, Mr. Powers.
We truly will miss Chief Powers as the chief of the Burnham Fire Department, however, I have no doubt in my mind that this department will continue to be in good hands, under good leadership and professionalism, and we also have a fantastic team on the Fire Department, so we will continue to move forward. Discussion of consideration and taking action to approve or not approve on the appointment of Mr. John Kowalski, if I pronounced that right?
Correct.
As Fire Chief of the Village of the Burnham Fire Department.
All right, Chief, we have the board of the first few, raising them up. Well, here we are again, it's been so long ago.
The last time I was here, my beautiful girlfriend, and now my wife.
Hello.
So, I just want to thank you for this opportunity like last time. As far as our future goes, nothing's changed, as you read in the letter from Chief Powers, the village of Burnham, citizens are most important, and obviously the members, and we just want to give you a fire department that you can be proud of and count on at any given time. And I thank you once again, Mr. Polk, and the board of trustees, thank you for this opportunity, and I also want to thank Larry for accepting my offer, if they've been chief, be good, be willing to do anything for anybody, I gotta do this call, and I fully believe in it, thank you once again.
I have a question. I'd be-
I'd like to make a motion to approve on the appointment of Mr. John Kowalski as Fire Chief of the Village of the Burnham Fire Department.
Trustee Greer has made a motion to approve the performance, I'll second it, present the trustee capo for take the room.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Bonner?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes.
Motion, are you willing to vote for us now?
Discussion of consideration and taking action to approve or not approve on the appointment of Mr. Larry McPherson as deputy fire chief of the village of Burnham Fire Department.
Again, I'd like to thank the board and, uh, the trustees for, uh, giving me this opportunity to do this. I thank John for, uh, believing in me and letting me do this. Um, again, like John said, just to, we already said that our department here is to make you guys proud. That's what we're gonna do. So looking forward, everything's forward. We, uh, pushing ahead, thank you all for us. Thank you.
And, and may I add that I've known you two gentlemen for many, many, many years. And I thank you for your continued dedicated service, for your approachableness, for your, your dedication to the community. You guys are awesome firefighters. You guys are awesome people. And thank you again.
Thank you.
To approve on the appointment of Mr. Larry McPherson as deputy fire chief of the village of Burnham Fire Department.
And trustee Brown made a motion to approve the appointment. Trustee Brown was in the second, in the second, for take a roll.
Trustee Cal?
Yes.
Trustee Vanna?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Clayton?
Yes.
And motion, now you will have to go first.
Now, the extra, uh, time, daylight saving time ends in twenty twenty at two A M. on Sunday, November the first. Marking the time when clocks fall back and we gain an extra hour of sleep. So that's this Sunday, November the first. And we would like to thank everyone that attended our COVID nineteen testing and our mass giveaway on therapy. It was, um, a success, a great success. Testing and our mass giveaway on therapy. It was, um, a success, a great success. I'd like to thank everyone that, that, uh, participated in helping this, our proj, this project, this event a success. And as I always say, there is no, there is no success and, uh, it takes a team in order to make things happen and work. So again, I thank everyone that made, that came out to make that, um, project a success.
Seventy people were tested for selling it.
And then we had to stop, you know, it was time, uh, to stop, but they were, they were lining up. And so it was great. And, and as you know, all providers and testing sites must report to the public health all individuals tested for COVID nineteen in accordance with the Illinois Control of Communal Diseases. They must report by low probable or confirmed cases, and they do this electronically. And as you know, the COVID nineteen is spread mainly between person to person who are in close contact, six feet. The respiratory virus is produced when an infected person coughs or sneezes. And I know we, we constantly hearing this information, but this information is so, so important. People are taking, um, this lightly, but as you know, and if you listen to the news, where, um, the, the, um, it's coming, it's building up. And more and more people are becoming, uh, infected with this virus. So signs and symptoms of the COVID nineteen includes fever, cough, and shortness of breath. If you are sick and have respiratory symptoms such as a fever, cough, shortness of breath, stay home and call your health provider. That's it.
Thank you, trustee Brown, for your information. Public Works and Building and Trustee Cleveland.
Good evening. Good evening.
I might have a message from, uh, a, a letter, a resignation letter from Reyes Fino as code enforcement officer. It reads, uh, "Good evening, Mayor. After much thought and consideration, I find myself in need to resign from this position. Unfortunately, due to my work schedule and family obligations, I don't have the time to commit to the position in an effective manner. The only time I really have and available, the only time I really have available are weekends. And I feel at this point in my life, I can better spend that time with my family. My apologies for spring, my apologies for spring and disappointment. I just wanted to make sure we have a document in writing describing the reason for the resignation. Please let me know when it, when is the best time to return the badge, car keys, and phone. Thank you for everything, Mr. Mayor Polk, and for considering me as a candidate when the position became available. Signed sincerely, uh, Reyes Fino."
Well, I need to do a twenty-four hour briefing there today.
All right, and now we have, uh, discussion of consideration of and taking action to approve or not approve on the hiring of Bernard Wimbley as code enforcer for the village of Burnham.
Do the board have any question for Mr.?
Is he here?
Oh.
You can tell a little bit about yourself.
Um, how, how's it very doing?
All right.
I've been in Burnham fourteen years, um, looking forward to the task of code enforcement. Um, it's a challenge. Know I can do it. Um, just split.
Between these guys, these guys, these guys, and you, you guys are the most important people in this village. And thank you for joining, for joining, uh, on the working team.
Yeah.
And we look forward to your, your service.
Also, we don't pick anything but the best, so we'll keep it in.
Make a motion to approve on the appointment. Uh, I make a, I make a motion to approve on the appointment. Uh, I make a motion to approve on the hiring of Bernard Wimbley as code enforcer for the village of Burnham.
So you make a motion, so we need a second to.
Not second it.
So we're probably with the winner. Can you take a roll?
Trustee Cal?
Yes.
Trustee Vanna?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Clayton?
Yes.
Uh, motion passed. Now you both have a ball.
Uh, one more thing, uh, Public Works has been out doing general cleaning. Also, it's fall now. So the leaves, uh, when you break them, you can break them into the, uh, the curb. And, uh, Public Works was coming, uh, remove the leaves. It's starting now. So, uh, so what happened?
It's a, I know we down there, so are we still able to collect the leaves with the, put the back on them?
Yeah, we think I'm fine. Okay.
Okay.
And not, we don't want them to park it to the curb. We want them to park, put it on the parkway.
On the parkway?
On the curb.
Okay, cool.
And, uh, when they do, don't try not to park their car in front of it so we can get to it.
Okay, cool. And the order of the revolution plan, trustee Garcia?
Please. Discussion of consideration of taking action to approve Bernard code on ordinance number twenty twenty dash O dash zero zero five, an ordinance establishing the salaries of elected officials, appointed officials, local liquor control commissioners, members of the police department, fire department, and other employees of the village of Burnham.
Okay, that's much, but before we, um, move forward on this, I'd like to reiterate again the, um, state statute for knowing an elected official that's in office cannot, cannot give themselves a raise during the term in office. So if this boy, I mean, were to, I mean, had decided that we weren't giving ourselves a raise, we would have had to done about September twenty seventh, like I said before. It has to be a hundred and eighty days before the next one is elected, which is the state statute. And so whatever we do, it is definitely gonna be decent, and it's gonna be in order. Okay? So I'm not going to give you the rest.
So this is just procedural?
Hmm?
This is just procedural?
And it's procedure. So this is a procedure, and that would be in there. So there's no one out here that's gonna be getting any type of raise for the thing, yeah, so. Um, and even, and even if we did give ourselves a raise, and we didn't get three elected the next time, if somebody else would get it. That's made it work. I'll proceed, trustee.
I make a motion to approve ordinance number twenty twenty dash O dash zero zero five, an ordinance establishing the salaries of elected officials, appointed officials, local liquor control commissioners, members of the police department, fire department, and other employees of the village of Burnham.
Motion for by trustee Garcia to pass the revolution, maybe a second please. Say it. Second by trustee Cleveland, for take a roll.
Trustee Cal?
Yes.
Trustee Vanna?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Clayton?
Yes.
And the motion passed. Dan, thank you, trustee Garcia.
No.
And trustee Garcia, fine enough, trustee Cal.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I have a couple issues, um, a couple items. Discussion of consi, consideration of and taking action on the authorization of transferring from the corporate funds to the water fund, the amount of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
And trustee could use plan for the waters, water expenses, whatever. I mean, what is going there?
Well, we're just, we're, the purpose of this is try to reduce the debt of the water department. And we had some extra funds in the corporate, so we're, it's, the plan is, what?
The water fund.
What did I say?
Water.
Oh, water department, water fund. Okay, so the plan is for this to continue. So this is the first step of helping to reduce the, uh, debt in the water fund.
And then at, at, what point will it be at that point?
We, we're not at this point to estimate how, how long it'll take us to get it down. So this is like the first step.
It'll probably be a couple of years for sure.
We're not making any commitments. So we're gonna do so much every month or so much every quarter.
Probably a quarter or so. It would also depend on all the collections that come in. It would also depend on the maintenance, repairs that we have to work again. A lot of infrastructure that are old, that we have to repair, you know, sometimes. And if the winter comes up or something, we could have watering works, you know, if we have some of those, you know, so. And so it kind of depends on all of that.
So I'd like to make a motion to authorize the transfer of, uh, corporate funds to the water fund in the amount of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
And the motion for by trustee Cal to approve is far in progress.
A second. A second.
Second by trustee Richardson, for take a roll.
Trustee Cal?
Yes.
Trustee Vanna?
No.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Clayton?
Yes.
Our motion passed and thank you. And again, and again, we can do this because of the success, I mean, uh, resident are here, so we can afford to do this now. Here, so we can afford to do this now. So I appreciate the board for approving it, voting for it, and if you voted for something, it's gonna get the village moving forward. We appreciate your support.
Second item is the discussion of consideration of and taking action on authorizing the payment of this month's bills. Okay, any questions? I know everybody has seen them. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the, uh, payment of this month's bills.
And then the motion for by trustee Cal and a second by trustee Brown, for take a roll.
Trustee Cal?
Yes.
Trustee Vanna?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Clayton?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passed.
We are looking into providing a copy of those, but it's very difficult right now because of the amount of pages. Right now because the amount of pages. So maybe if we get some new software at a little later date, we might be able to provide like a one page for each bill. We're currently now at the, it's waiting for it. You, everybody knows that sees it, how big the stack is.
Or maybe a, a brief synopsis of, of the breakdown of each department without.
That would still be difficult. That would still be difficult. But then it wouldn't be enough information. They don't wanna know what the bill was and what the amount is. Everybody just wanna know what it was for.
But anything about it would not have that much.
So we can't, you can't stop by my office and look at them anytime. But we can find, we didn't come up with a good way to make copies of it at this point.
Would like your question.
No, I'd like to thank everyone who checked on me during my little brief illness. So thank you for the prayers, well wishes, phone calls. Thank you very much. That's it.
Trustee Cal, thank you for your information. For public utilities, trustee Richardson?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Up next week, October twenty eighth through the third, water hydrant flushing will take place on the east side of the village of Burnham. Things to remember during the flushing of the hydrant sun. There may, there could be sediment in the tap water in your home. This is normal, and it's not harmful. Flush the water thoroughly. I mean, flush the water through your faucet until the water is clear. Do not try to do your laundry because the iron in the water could stain your clothing. So make sure your water is running clear through your faucets before washing your clothes. And a decrease in your water pressure is normal while the hydrants are being flushed. This is a temporary inconvenience, and the water pressure will be back to normal. So for those that might incur some of those things, don't panic. It won't last for long. And I have a couple of sites that you can go to. Uh, Cook County Board President Preck Winkle started a program yesterday where she's offering, where you can apply to get a six hundred dollar grant. There's a website that you need to go on to, uh, to apply for this. The website is W W W dot Cook County I L dot gov backward slash recovery. So you can go to that website and follow the procedures and apply for the six hundred dollar grant. And this is due to COVID nineteen.
Sorry, we need to get it there.
Yes. The website is W W W dot Cook County I L dot gov backward slash recovery. And there's another site that's a state-funded, um, program that you can go on for emergency relief. And that is W W W two, the number two, dot Illinois dot gov. So these, uh, this particular one is sort of dealing with, uh, what CETA helps out with. They're supposed to also help you with your water bill. But you should go to the website if you do need assistance and just follow the procedures. And that's it.
Thank you, trustee Richardson, for that information. Top recreation, trustee Vanna?
No reports.
I do wanna report that the, uh, I mentioned before that the top lot at a hundred and thirty-nine and Hoxsey does have a new swing set.
Oh.
But it is, so it took a long time, but, yeah, but it has been installed. Um, they had a presentation, a petition, communication, a memorial.
Yes. Uh, memorial, I wanted to, uh, add for a moment of silence for, uh, former Burnham residents, uh, Bishop Marcus Random. He's a pastor where, uh, actually my pastor, Resurrection House Baptist Church, he passed away, uh, ten eleven, October eleventh. And, uh, his services was this weekend, and it was nice, and, uh, he will be missed.
And could we add Mr. Lawrence Hopper to there?
And Mr. Lawrence Hopper is awesome.
All right, thank you. And then communication, the lawyers, the last officer said, are there any unfinished business? I mean, they have a new building. I will add for a motion to adjourn.
You have a motion to adjourn?
A motion of, by trustee Cleveland to adjourn, but we have a second?
Second. Second.
Trustee Richardson? For take a roll.
Trustee Cal?
Yes.
Trustee Vanna?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Clayton?
Yes.
Martin, motion passed, meet at the adjourn. Thank you for coming.
Congratulations, guys.
Thank you.